Patrice Steiner.
Here.
Stephen Becker.
Here.
Barbara Das.
Yes.
Eileen Nichols.
Here.
Dick Bonin.
Yep.
Ken Killian.
Here.
Michael DeLecky.
Here.
Will accountable for.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda tonight is a public hearing regarding ordinance 12-38, amending section 22.06, the specific standards ordinance specifically for outside eating and drinking areas will begin with staff presentation.
Okay, this section of the ordinance deals with, basically it provides additional guidance or regulations for private property restaurants, taverns that have outside eating or drinking areas. As the ordinance is written now, it basically is just limited to if it's an establishment that serves liquor, they have to have a fence around the property and the requirement is for an eight-foot-high fence. And then if it doesn't require liquor, or it doesn't provide liquor, then they just have to have garbage receptacles provided. Since we're also talking about, and it'll be later on the agenda, about the sidewalk cafe ordinance, which does allow service right on a public sidewalk, it seemed like an appropriate time to take a look at this ordinance and see if there's some changes that could be made so that the two ordinances are compatible. And in particular, it seemed strange to me to have a requirement for an eight-foot-high fence around it on the private property when you don't have any fencing requirements, could be right out in front of the establishment on the public sidewalk. So, that one I thought was worthy of a conversation. So I proposed some changes. Basically, it eliminated the minimum requirement that it absolutely has to have a fence if you have liquor. The ordinance as proposed just says that the requirements for fencing or other enclosures could be a condition of a conditional use permit, so that can be kind of viewed as a case-by-case basis depending on the neighborhood and so forth. And then there are other requirements about the hours of operation, outside noise, trying to control some of the potential issues with music and outside noise. And then, you know, protecting fire escapes and trash receptacles and that type of thing. So, it seemed to me that this was more compatible with some of the issues we're looking at with the sidewalk cafe ordinance. The Plan Commission did look at this and they recommended approval. And I believe the licensing committee discussed this and their only concern was about removing the fencing requirement, so that's why we have that in there, at least it can be a condition of the conditional use permit. So, staff does recommend approval. Any questions?
Okay, thank you.
I do have one question. When a conditional use permit is issued, is that issued for the property or for the business?
For the property. Basically, if that business changes hands or somebody does that, it can continue to operate under the previous conditions. It doesn't automatically cease if the business closes or changes hands. As long as they continue to operate, basically under those parameters that were set up, it can change hands or go to a different business.
And so, who would be the person, or persons in charge of helping the new owner to understand the conditions that were, you know, let's say I get a conditional use permit and in 10 years I sell my business?
Well, I mean, if anybody has any questions regarding zoning, it would be, you know,
It would come to you.
Our department, yeah.
Part of a conditional use permit, could, as part of the approval process, could you not have a condition in there that if the property changes hand, they have to come back for a renewal or something? Could you write that provision as part of the conditional use permit?
You could, yes.
And that has been done in this city with several different properties, is that not correct?
I know it's been done at least twice that I can think of.
Other questions? Hearing none, there have been no requests to make public statements in favor, against or in general, so we're back to council discussion. Motion to close the public hearing would be in order.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
The motion and a second to close the public hearing, roll call vote please.
Steiner.
Yes.
Becker.
Yes.
Das.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Bonin.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
DeLecky.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Any action?
I move to approve the zoning code amendment for outside eating and drinking areas as presented.
Second.
Becker got there first. Motion and a second, is there any other discussion? Roll call vote please.
Steiner.
Yes.
Becker.
Okay, yes.
Das.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Bonin.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
DeLecky.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item four on the agenda tonight is the consideration of the consent calendar, the following items may be approved on a single motion and vote. Due to their routine nature or previous discussion, please indicate if you'd prefer separate discussion and action. Item A is the minutes of the October 18th special council meeting and the October 23rd council meeting. B is payment of bills. C, the financial statement for October. D, appointments to boards and commissions tonight, I have none. E is licenses, the temporary class retailer license for St. Augustine University Parish at 135 South Hickory Street for trivia night on November 30th, 2012. The one and/or two-year operator's licenses, the taxi driver license. Item F is the permit for Tricor Insurance in Thursday's Child Jingle Bell 5K Fund Run Walk on December 1st, 2012 at 9:00 a.m. in Smith Park. Item G is Resolution 12-31, Restoration of Shared Revenue Funding. H is Resolution 12-32, Ensuring Municipalities Receive Timely and Reliable Financial Information from the State. I is Resolution 12-33, Treat All Municipal Employees the Same With Respect to Wisconsin Retirement System Contributions. J is Resolution 12-34, Preservation of Tax Exempt Financing. And K is Resolution 12-35, Preservation of Municipal Utility Pilots. Is there any item on which you prefer separate discussion and action?
I move, we accept A through K.
Second.
Motion is second. I would like to remove I for separate discussion and action. So, would you?
So be it.
Okay. So the motion is to approve the consent calendar with the exception of I. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries. I is the resolution to treat all municipal employees the same with respect to Wisconsin retirement system contributions. I'm not really sure where this comes from. I oppose that resolution. It seems as if it's designed to make sure that since some municipal employees can't have certain benefits, that none of them can have it. And I don't think we should be in the position of arguing for that. If we want to cut back certain things, we ought to cut them back. I don't think we should be doing a resolution for it.
Eileen, did you get this from the league?
This is something that, yes, the legal Wisconsin municipalities presented these resolutions at the legal Wisconsin municipalities meeting, annual meeting which recently took place, and the feeling is that indeed it would be beneficial for cities and villages to have the ability to treat all employees the same. And that is exactly what they're saying here, which is that, obviously, there was much discussion on Act 10 exempting police officers and firefighters. And the feeling of the board was that it should be changed to include all employees.
Other comments?
This actually would take, you know, for the general public, for instance, in this case, police, some police, people employed by the police department pay the contribution for their retirement, others in the police department that are employed as police officers do not. And so, this actually talks about having all be treated equally in terms of that contribution. And I would make a motion to adopt this resolution.
Second.
The motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
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 Pose same sign, aye. That motion carries. Moving on to citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any, we ask that comments be limited to no more than five minutes and there have been no requests to speak tonight. Item six is reports.
DeLecky, could I ask a question? And I meant to send this to city staff before. Could you, could somebody please send clarification on the rules for parking on West Main Street or if you know them offhand? Is it unlimited parking? Can you park overnight? Can, what are the parking rules for West Main Street? Basically, from Hickory Street west to the city limits.
I would have to look.
Okay. If somebody could, I meant to email somebody today and forgot to do that, so.
You do that, just email it to everyone. We all have copies, thank you. Item six tonight is reports, we have committee reports, Public Library, Nichols.
Nothing to add.
Platteville Airport Commission, Nichols.
Yeah.
And there are other reports, we have the airport financial statement for October, the water and sewer revenue and expense report for October, the city attorney item I statement for October, and department progress reports. Is there any item there on which you have questions or would like to make comment?
Mr. Council President. Just wanted to inform everybody that as of this afternoon, Water Street and State Trunk Highway 80 are now open and that we will have our ribbon-cutting ceremony tomorrow at 1:00 p.m. at the Armory.
Thank you. You can drive on it tonight?
Yes.
Patrice is happy.
Party.
It may have been the longest project in the city I can ever recall. And I don't just mean in miles. Moving on to item seven tonight, action items. Item A is ordinance 12-33, Creating Section 4.07 Sidewalk Cafe Permits. Let's have a little staff discussion first, please.
Okay, this is an ordinance that would allow the city to issue permits or people to apply for a permit if they want to have a cafe or extension of their restaurant, basically onto the public sidewalk in front of their business. They would make an application, excuse me, to my office. We'd do a review and then it would go through the review process, ultimately being approved by the Plan Commission and council. If there's liquor involved, they would also have to have an expansion of their liquor license to include that area defined, and that would be approved at the same manner that the liquor license is approved. There are regulations that govern the operation of that sidewalk cafe as far as the location of tables and chairs. There's minimum width requirements to be maintained for public egress, minimum distances from fire hydrants and so forth. There's requirements about, you know, the materials for the sidewalk cafe chairs and tables, requirements about noise, music, preparation of food and the like. If there are any issues that come up with that, the license or the permit can be revoked. And there's a procedure that's outlined in the ordinance to allow for that. If there are any issues that come up that cannot be remedied easily, that the city does have the ability to revoke that. It is intended to be a seasonal type of situation so that it's not operated, obviously, during the winter, so there's no issues with snow removal. So that's what's proposed. As I mentioned, we outlined, so this, some of this same language is comparable to what would be on the private sector. Obviously, there's some additional rules because it is a public sidewalk. Any questions?
How much is the permit going to be, though?
The amount?
Yeah.
That will yet to be determined.
Other questions? Would you care to make a motion?
I'd make a motion to adopt.
Second was that, Dick? Eileen. Motion by Das, second by Nichols to adopt the ordinance. Any other discussion? Roll call vote please.
Steiner.
Yes.
Becker.
Yes.
Das.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Bonin.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
DeLecky.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item B under action tonight is Resolution 12-30, Establishing Billing Rates for the Platteville Municipal, excuse me, the Platteville Emergency Medical Service. Brian, would you give us a brief rundown on that?
Good evening. With the expenses going up, we were looking at increasing our fee to cover the cost to run the ambulance service. There was an update as far as, from the last meeting, as far as the oxygen fee and also the cardiac monitor fee that was made after consulting with the billing company, the Shakota Company, which we use. We were at the, we were at the very bottom of all the services that they charge for as far as fees. So those were adjusted so that we were in line with all the rest of them. Also, a question was asked about the comparables that we use, so I did bring that information. As far as our comparables, the ones that are, there are seven that are likely or will be increasing their fees this year, for this coming year. There is one that flat out said, no, they will not be. And there were five that said that it was too early, their board hasn't discussed anything yet. And, are there any questions on the fees?
Were all the fees raised, Brian?
Yes.
All of them?
They're all adjusted.
So this is going to make the EMS service essentially net zero, no tax revenue needed to provide that service?
Correct, it should be about an initial.
How much was provided this year by taxpayers?
For 2011, our total deficit was $34,215.
Split between the townships and?
And the city.
The city. And what is it projected to be in 2012?
Roughly the same.
$34,000. Of which how much Duane was paid by the city?
Roughly three-fourths of it, I believe.
The townships cover 23 or 24.
I think it's 24 percent somewhere near. It changed over here.
The services that you consulted with, how many of them are standalone services? Do not have no, have our volunteer services that are run as independent, 501(c)(3)'s or (c)(6)'s or (c)(4)'s?
Delvin. Dodgeville. Monroe, which is Green County. I believe that's it, the rest are city, or in there is one private company.
Other questions for Brian? Brian, thank you. But that's kind of cool that we're moving in the right direction on revenues here. Would you care to make a motion?
I move to approve Resolution 12-30, Establishing the Billing Rates for the Platteville EMS.
Second to the motion.
The motion is second, any further discussion?
Is there someplace where the term resident versus non-resident is defined in your, in your information? The reason I ask this is because I have in the past, I'm retired now, but in the past, student, I know of students who were charged non-resident fee for transport. And it's my understanding that you said last time that students living within the city of Platteville would be considered residents?
Correct. If they provide a local address when they're asked for the address, and our staff will ask for a local address, if they will not give us a local address, we have no way of knowing that they actually are living in the city or within our district.
Does somebody tell them why you're asking for it?
I.
I mean, it's one thing to ask for it and it's another, I mean, some students would give their, would probably give their home billing address because they want their parents to receive any billing statement. And so, especially in light of, you know, when you're sick and being transported, I'm not too sure that you would ask all the questions. I'm just, I just want us to be very attuned to the fact that if we have resident and non-resident fees, that we treat all residents of Platteville regardless of whether they're students or not students.
Yep, we also, when we have an individual that we believe is a student, we also check the school's online phone book to see if they are a student, listed in the university directory as a student. And if they are, regardless of what address they provide, we mark them as a resident.
Brian, does this resident then include the townships that are in?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, if it's anybody that lives within our ambulance district, it's considered a resident.
Any other questions? Roll call vote please.
Steiner.
Yes.
Becker.
Yes.
Das.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Bonin.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
DeLecky.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item C under action tonight is Contract 13-12 for Snow and Ice Removal. Pretty straightforward, every year we have a contract to do snow and ice removal of sidewalks and such that aren't cleared by the property owner.
Correct.
And the low bid was for ice and snow removal for Four Seasons Landscaping and Nursery, it costs 11 cents per square foot, with a $30 minimum charge for snow removal, and 12 cents per square foot with a $35 minimum charge for ice and tax snow removal.
Did Four Seasons do it last year?
I did not look at it, I don't believe so. I think there was another contractor that did it last year, however, Four Seasons has done it in the past.
I would move to approve Contract 13-12, Snow and Ice Removal, awarded to Four Seasons Landscaping here in Platteville.
Second. Motion is second, is there any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Steiner.
Yes.
Becker.
Yes.
Das.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Bonin.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
DeLecky.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item A on the agenda tonight is information and discussion. Item A under that is ordinance amending the official traffic map, specifically no parking on Jewett Street. Howard, do you want to briefly describe what's going on here?
Yes. During our reconstruction effort for Jewett Street, we narrowed the street and worked with the residents to identify restricted parking on one side of the street. And what this is doing is eliminating the parking on the inside of the horseshoe, if you will, from Hathaway Street all the way around to Madison Circle. The residents thought this would be better since that's where the postal employees deliver the mail. So, we did send a letter out reminding the owners and residents that this was coming before the council. And I have not received any comments, other than I thought we were going to do this before, but we're doing it now.
Thank you, Howard. Any questions? Item B under information and discussion is ordinance repealing Section 31.17, that's the cable television, part of the city ordinance. It's out of date, obsolete, and we're just bringing ourselves into consistency with the state, is that not right? Okay. Any questions on that? Item C is the 2013 Tourism Entity Action Plan and Budget, submitted to us by the Tourism Committee. Deb Jennings here, if you have any questions for her. Appear to be any for you, Deb.
Well, no, I probably have a couple. Not so fast. I hope you probably have to go to the podium.
This is that awkward part where I stare into the camera and try not to scratch.
Just a couple of things, Deb. The first question is if, say, an organization is planning an event, something that's never been done before, something that the tourism committee has never had opportunity to support before, is there, is there a process in place where somebody can go to the tourism committee and request money for an event, no matter what it is? If it's, you know, a film festival, whatever? Would the committee have, say, funds set aside? Because, you know, I looked at your budget and it's, it's all, you know, planned out for the whole $56,000 that you typically get from the room tax money.
There used to be a sort of grant program where people would come in and pay for costs and.
This thing doesn't like me. They could make requests, but then they changed the process and the city, with the city taking part of the funds, and there's no additional dollars available. What they've, we've informally done is basically people request and we try and send them either to the chamber or, you know, direct them back to the city or whatever we can do until we have, you know, a way of having additional funds. We have been discussing some alternate ways of getting additional funds, increasing the room tax, grants, that kind of thing.
Okay. And then I know, in reading through your minutes, you had, there was a discussion, I believe, about raising the room tax a half a percent. Do you know what's happening with that?
We're still in the discussion stage on that.
Okay, and also, one more question. If you have a, an event that involves, say, more than one city, like Platteville-Potosi, do you have that other city contribute funds to help pay for, say, a tourism event, like the brewery, for example? I mean, I do see posters quite a bit, you know, around town about the brewery, well, that's in Potosi, and now this is municipal tax funds.
We basically have a partnership, you know, they have a convention center, we don't, you know, we share back and forth. No, their response, and the response of the county and some others that have been asked is, they don't have any money either. But it is something that we tried to request.
And, so there'd be no money coming from, say, the city of Potosi in any way?
But they.
I know they don't have, they don't have a chamber, per se.
But they also advertise for us as well, we've got the rooms.
That's all I have.
Anything else for Deb while she's up there?
I have a quick question. Staffing is listed under the supporting documents for each of the entities.
Mm-hmm.
Under number one, staffing is 20 hours per week. Is there a way that that person could do the stuff that's in number three, number four, and number five while they're staffing the center? Maybe give them a couple of things to do?
Well, I think that they do.
Okay.
But many times they're, they're wrapped up in the people that are visiting the welcome center. In the summer, it gets pretty busy. But they do try to do multiple things while they're, while they're there.
Any other questions for Deb? Thank you, Deb.
I would ask, where are we this year, Duane, as far as the collection compared to what our 2012 estimated numbers are? Got any feel for it? Are we ahead of, ahead of last year?
We're ahead of last year by a little bit. We're pretty much on schedule, I think, for the budget right now.
And the amount that they actually will receive in 2013 will be based upon actual collections. So the budget's based for $56,000 and they could receive more, correct?
If we get more taxes, they would receive more, yes.
So, assuming we have additional revenues come in, there may be some additional funds available for some special events like Patrice referred to. The money comes in. And I think the tourism entity would probably look favorable upon that, if we got extra money.
Well, the economy's improving.
That's what people are saying.
Yeah.
Hope.
Okay. Next on the information and discussion, part of the agenda is the item D, conditional use permit for a car wash at 1950 Uber Sox Drive. This is to put up an accessory building that will include detailing sections for their own use as well as a public car wash. This has gone through the Plan Commission with some discussion and some change of traffic flow and been approved by the Plan Commission. Any questions on that? Item E is a zoning amendment for a wellhead protection overlay district. I'm going to ask Howard to talk about this one.
Okay. Under, under Wisconsin DNR requirements, we are required to put in a wellhead protection overlay district. It rides over top of all the other district rules, zoning rules that we currently have. And it's there in order to protect the area around our new well from potential contamination sources, like underground fuel storage tanks and other things of that nature. And so, what we have is there's a wellhead protection plan that was sent to the Wisconsin DNR that talks about it. And what this is, is this is the ordinance that would be the teeth enforcing. And what this is, is this is the ordinance that would be the teeth enforcing the plan. This has gone through both the Water and Sewer Commission and the Plan Commission and they all recommend approval of this overlay district. The, the most restrictive area is within 600 feet of the, 607 feet of the well, which is what they call the five-year time of travel, the recharge zone for this facility. And you can see in the back, there are a couple of maps that show you where that is in relation to the other buildings and facilities.
So the short version is this is to protect the quality of the water that we get out of that brand-new well.
Correct.
I have, I do have a question.
Yes.
I would say that the majority of the property that's covered by this overlay district is not, or is it within the city of Platville's corporate limits? Is this property we own or is this property owned by someone else?
The, the city limits is on the inside of the four lane. You can see on the, on the aerial map, there's the black line along the east, or the west right-of-way of the four lane. And that, everything inside of that is in the city limits. So the only thing that's outside the city limits is the four lane itself and that small semicircle in that southeast corner.
Right. My question dealt with ownership of these properties.
Oh. Most of this is owned by others, not by the city proper. The city owns the Water Tower property. It owns a small piece of property just north of Means Drive. And we own a small portion, a small corner over on the extreme west side of the Zone B, 1,200 feet, that's in the city-owned industry park land. Most of the rest of this is privately owned, as far as I know.
And so how are those private landowners, have those private landowners been informed of this and any, of any regulations or restrictions? I know that some of this is farmland and may in fact be treated with pesticides, herbicides, or whatever. Who, who has responsibility for advising, working with, informing landowners that, I mean, it's great to have an overlay district, but the subsequent of that is if there is, I mean, so how do these landowners know that this overlay district and whatever rules are?
We'll have to send notice to them.
I don't know if we did or not.
No. I mean, it will be, there will be a public hearing at the last, the next meeting and the notice has been in the paper. We have not done an actual mailing to the property owners. Any building permit that would be obtained to do any improvements or so forth that would be in violation of this ordinance, obviously, would be caught at that particular time. If it's an existing use that is not conforming, they could continue with some of the restrictions placed in here. So it's generally to guide new development on the property.
But it also could relate to current use.
It could, correct.
And so I think it would probably, rather than just a public notice in the newspaper, I think it would be a good idea to have each landowner receive a letter and this, so that they're aware of this ordinance.
Okay. Don't they have to receive one anyway if there's a rezoning?
But it, it doesn't mean it's, well, yeah, is it a re, it's a overlay district.
It's an ordinance amendment. It's technically not a rezoning, so, but we can send it out.
Anything else on that? Item F is the purview stormwater agreement amendment. This is a request from developer Bob Cody to delay the payment of his share of the stormwater management costs and to make it over a five-year period in time with interest at 4%. Now we have two items tabled from previous meetings. The first is a resolution adopting assigned parking for downtown spaces. The second is to adopt an updated master parks plan.
I'd like to remove these items from the table. I don't know what the status is as far as the master park plan, but as far as the assigned parking, that was to be looked at as far as with the survey. And that survey was to be completed by October 31st. So my motion is to place on the agenda for next time, the consideration of looking at assigned parking for downtown spaces.
I would, uh?
Well, I don't think we have a motion under information, but?
Right. And I, I would, I would respectfully ask that that be delayed until the first meeting in December. And the reason is because the RDA changed its meeting date from the second Monday of the month to the fourth Monday of the month. So we will be looking at the survey at our meeting on the 26th and, and, or on that Monday.
What are you expecting to get out of this survey? It wasn't done scientifically, just an opinion poll.
I understand that, but we would at least like the opportunity to look at it.
And it's just like those things that are on, online where it always ends up being, this is an opinion poll showing the opinions of those who chose to participate. And since some of it was, there's some reason to think that there are multiple inserts by some people, this is really not a scientific poll that really is going to give us any information at all. And so I don't know why we would necessarily feel that it was going to drive the discussion. And by the way, we knew that in the beginning and it still went ahead, so.
Right. We knew that at the beginning, but I do ask that at least the RDA have the chance to look at the survey, look at the results of the opinion poll and then come back with a recommendation. And I, it's, we, we needed to change our meeting to the fourth Monday. We did that. So we have not met since the, in fact, the survey was, the opinion poll results have just been tallied.
So you have a recommendation, the first meeting in December?
First meeting in December.
Will we see the results of the survey?
Certainly. The opinion poll? Sure.
I just hope we don't build any public policy on something like that because it's an incredible mistake to do that. If you're going to do a survey, do it scientifically and have a clear sampling frame and a well-designed survey. Don't just fling something out in businesses downtown where anybody walking in can fill them out because that gets you nothing except a mess.
I'm in favor of waiting until all the surveys have been tallied. I think we owe that to the individuals who took the time to answer them. And to me, it's no less scientific than anyone else walking downtown and giving us a review on what they saw parking for a week. So I'm in favor of waiting until the first meeting in December and we'll have the results of the survey and the results of the RDA meeting.
Ken, is that all right with you? Can we bring it back in the first meeting?
That's, that's, that's fine.
All right.
As long as this keeps moving along.
What about the parks plan?
And the master parks plan, that was supposed to be seen by the Safe Routes Committee. Has that been done?
At our Safe Routes Committee meeting, there was not a quorum. So we will be prepared for the first meeting in December.
Bring that back down as well. Okay. That ends the on-camera part of the meeting. We will retire to a work session where we will discuss the potential leasing of city council chambers, the EMS building, and the 2013 city budget, and then we'll adjourn. No action will be taken at those work sessions. Thank you. We'll take a five-minute break and then reconvene around the table.